Okay, are we going to get started? Well, I haven't heard the recording thing yet.
Oh, roll call?
Oh, we had the recording.
Oh, yeah, we're started, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Yes, next is roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
And Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
And Councilmember Woodard let me know about 45 minutes ago that he'll be here shortly. He was just running a little bit late, so we'll recognize him when he comes in.
All right, thank you. Let's see, next is the, shall we do that first or the changing of the? Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to, move item eight up to item four and then move everything else down the agenda.
Second.
So we're going to move item eight to number four, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It has been moved. Thank you. So next is the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. Last Saturday, we had about 85 people volunteer as part of our Arbor Day and Earth Day celebrations, both in Veterans Park and at Terrace Creek Park. About 60 people here and another 25 or so over at Terrace Creek really appreciate that very successful event, and that's great to see, to have that many people come out to help the community. Wanted to remind all that your retreat, your strategic planning retreat is on Saturday, where we will talk about development of the 2025 and 2026 budget. And looking forward to that, get an early start, and we'll be working on that most of the day. And again, on next Tuesday night, there is a Chamber of Commerce event here in this room that will be discussing the economic development strategic plan that we've been working on, making sure we share our findings and kind of the direction we're going with with our business community and keeping those folks involved and able to comment and help us decide decide on direction. And next, sorry, the following Tuesday, on May 2nd, at your next regular meeting, we have a reception scheduled, starting about 30 minutes before your regular council meeting to, as part of the proclamation for AAPI month. And we'll have the director for the documentary film She Marches in Chinatown, and she'll be here along with a few members of the drill team, I believe. So that'll be, should be a lot of fun. We did have quite a few responses to the surveys that we sent out, both the community satisfaction survey, the budget survey, and the survey on the comprehensive plans. We're gathering all that data to make sure that you have that for your consideration at the retreat. And wanted to remind the community that the water quality report is going to go out in May. Send that out every year, and we're going to send that out in May, so be looking for that. And lastly, a big accomplishment, I think. So at the end of May, Jeff Betts, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be at the Washington, Washington Parks and Recreation Association annual meeting, where we have been selected as a finalist for the Spotlight Award for communities under 100,000 people for the Hazel Miller Universally Accessible Playground. And that's being selected as a finalist is an absolute honor. We're hoping we win that, but that is a fantastic project for the entire community. So with that, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, comments? Just yea.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is number eight, which we move to number four, which is the review of the ordinance for impact fee waiver for low-income childcare centers. And that is with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. So as I mentioned in the memo, in an effort to support all of our community members, we've received, reviewed opportunities in our development code to lower the threshold for those interested organizations that would serve low-income residents and make sure that we are serving all members of our community. The code language you see here is a new section of the code. So it, the new section is Municipal Code 1830-105. And basically what the the language does is after certification from, and let me make sure I get this, get the name of the state organization correct. After certification from the Washington Early Learning Loan Fund or and/or the Department of Commerce Early Learning Facilities Program, and the applicant can demonstrate the percentage of students anticipated to be served, then traffic, transportation impact fees for that particular project would be waived. There, the policy question is because transportation impact fees would be waived, are there any improvements that would need to be supplemented by other funds from elsewhere in the city? The RCW that was adopted several years ago, that's 82.02060, allows cities to waive those fees for a, basically a good governmental purpose or a broad public good. There is one interested party that's interested in developing something like this for our community now. In that area, I looked at our capital improvement program for transportation, and there are no projects planned in that area that would require additional or funds from, resources from a different fund to cover any capital improvement program, project in that area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you bringing this forward. We have, I think we have heard oftentimes from our community about the lack of both childcare just generally and particularly about the lack of affordable childcare. So I think in terms of needs in our city, this seems like a good opportunity to utilize the opportunity to waive those fees in order to to support, you know, hopefully more of this sort of development within our community. I will name that, you know, I think the area where there's potentially opportunity right away is an area where we have gotten lots of feedback around concerns about safety and traffic. And so while there is nothing planned there currently, I think particularly if we are adding a bunch of young folks to that area, I think, I mean, even if we weren't, I think that is an area we have identified as one that we need to have conversation around. And I think if we are going to add a bunch of of young folks into the mix, that will be even more critically so in terms of kind of when we we need to have that conversation. So supportive of of this, and I will just name that I would, I think that is something that if if that project were to move forward, I know this is kind of separate from that and support this broadly and generally, but if that particular particular project were to move forward, I think we would want to revisit that conversation even sooner than we may have it slated.
Yeah, and that is something that we will pay attention to, particularly in the the design of of the facility entrances, exits, those types of things and how that works. So we will, we will pay attention to that for sure.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, I'm wondering if this applies to any facilities retroactively, and I'm sure it it would, but are there any facilities that might currently benefit from this?
So current facilities either would have already paid their traffic, I keep saying traffic, sorry, transportation impact fees. There wouldn't be a refund out of the TIF program for that. But if they wished to expand, that would absolutely be an opportunity for any facility in the city.
Cool. Thanks for distilling my my simple question. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Here. Yeah, I just couldn't agree more. There's a desperate need for childcare in our community and especially affordable, so we're really pleased that we're moving forward with this. We hope that this is just the first of many opportunities of, to be able to provide more childcare in our city. So look forward to getting this passed and moving forward.
So this is going to be on?
Planned to be on your May 2nd consent agenda.
Okay. And everyone's agreeable for that? Okay, good. I see all the thumbs going up. Thank you very much. All right, so next on our agenda is the presentation on the comprehensive plan update with our senior planner, Jonathan Morales.
Iger first.
Oh, my God. Short change in, yeah?
Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Pro Tem Wall, members of council, Jonathan Morales, senior planner, here with Kristy Osborne, CD Director. Today, we are here for another comprehensive plan briefing with the city council. On the agenda today is an overview of project status and schedule. We have some updates on community engagement. We'll go over overview of work to date with the Comprehensive Plan Advisor Group and Planning Commission. We do have an update on the growth alternatives that we brought forward at our last city council briefing. And then we'll review some key takeaways from CPAG and Planning Commission on the draft land use and housing element goals and policies. So, sorry. So the first item here is the CIPA environmental impact statement process. As you know, we issued a CIPA scoping notice, which is required for environmental impact statements in November. That coincided with our open house on November 13, 2023, and that comment period was open until December 12th. We've completed draft alternatives development as of April. That went from January to April. Pretty intense vetting process with both CPAG and Planning Commission and staff as well to get the final alternatives that we decided on to move forward with. We're targeting a draft EIS for June 2024, and final is aligned with the comprehensive plan update adoption timeline. So as far as the draft plan, we're hoping to get a recommended draft to city council by late summer 2024. So end of August is the target. And then final plan, target adoption by October 2024. So in terms of the overall schedule, as you see here, we have each of the elements that we're reviewing. We're at the tail end of the land use and housing element. So the purpose today is to go through the policy comments with you. And we've concluded discussion on the environmental, environment element and recreation parks and open space element with Planning Commission. And so we are bringing that forward to you all at the next city council meeting. We've also concluded discussion on the economic vitality, yeah, economic vitality element. And we'll be discussing the transportation comments at the end of May with Planning Commission. And we are set to introduce the capital facilities and utilities policy concepts to CPAG at their May 1st meeting. Terms of community engagement, so we have monthly CPAG meetings. That's the first Wednesday of every month. We have three more. So we have one May 1st, and then June, we will have two meetings, and June 26th is the the last meeting for that group. We had a community vision survey that went out in the fall, sorry, the late summer, fall 2023, and that had about 268 responses. Again, the open house for the EIS CIPA scoping was November 13th. We recently had a open house on March 26th here in council chambers. For all engagement efforts, we have outreach and communications, so collaborating with our communications manager to ensure that there's outreach on our social media pages and and different outlets. And then ongoing online open house, so we do have an online open house on our webpage. So there's two buckets there. There's content from the fall 2023 open house, which we're still accepting comments for. And we also have content on the spring 2024 open house. That's the land use, housing, environment, and recreation parks and open space elements, as well as the vision statement, recommended draft vision statement. So for spring engagement, we have a spring engagement series where we're collecting feedback on the rise vision statement as well as elements in progress. Right now, we have the four that are listed here. But we'll continue to update the online open house with the remaining elements as they become available. And we're also starting our subarea planning process. So we had a workshop with Planning Commission on both subarea neighborhoods, the Melody Hill and Cascade View neighborhoods. We're right now planning for a workshop in May or early summer. Some more details will be provided to you. And then we're partnering with the VITA agency to do a more targeted engagement approach. And then again, the draft EIS public meeting and comment period will be in late spring. So March 26th, we had an open house, which had about 40 participants. I don't know if you have a few words to share about the open house?
Well, I saw several of of you folks there and always appreciated. I think what struck me is in each event that we're doing, we're seeing new people come. And so that's been pretty exciting. I think a lot of questions, people are actively engaged when they come. And so I think for the folks that are staffing it, it seems like we're, we're definitely talking about a whole host of issues to people that are showing up, so.
So just to summarize some of the engagement strategies that we're utilizing this spring. So we'll have both intercept survey and pop-up approach to engaging community. This will be at local BIPOC businesses, other businesses, the local food bank, community events, so spring events and also summers. So we are aware of the typical summer events, so Tour de Terrace and National Night Out, and also tabling opportunities that we've identified. We have some small group workshops being planned right now, one with Mount Lake Terrace High School. So I believe there's a meeting tomorrow to plan for that, and we're thinking of a May workshop with students. There's a local group of organized Latinas and Mount Lake Terrace, so that is being planned by the VITA agency for, I believe, May. In terms of some focus group ideas, we wanted to engage our faith-based organizations in town. So we're planning for a May or June focus group for both faith-based organizations as well as the development community. And again, a subarea neighborhood workshop or focus group is being planned. Right now, we're thinking of doing one workshop that will cover both subareas and hoping to have that in the Melody Hill neighborhood. So as you know, we go through a pretty intense process with reviewing policy goals and other items related to the comprehensive plan update. So our CPAG and Planning Commission are pretty crucial to ensuring that what's before you is what's being recommended, not only by the advisory bodies here, but also by community. So in terms of some key takeaways from what we've discussed with CPAG and PC, there's been overwhelming support for the updated growth alternative framework that we've, we've identified. There's support for increasing diversity of housing options throughout the city, increased potential for mixed-use multifamily developments, especially around existing commercial nodes, expansion of denser housing types within single-family neighborhoods close to light rail and town center and near the Melody Hill area. There's interest and advocacy for protecting naturally occurring affordable apartments and manufactured homes. And then support for draft land use, housing, environment, ARPOS, so recreation parks and open space, transportation and economic vitality goals and policy concepts that we've reviewed with the CPAG group. And with the Planning Commission, some of the items that we've engaged with them, again, are the the growth alternatives. So we did have to adjust the alternatives that were previously presented, and I'll speak on that a bit later. So they were, they were helpful with vetting our ideas and ensuring that we get it right. In terms of goals and policies, we've discussed land use and housing and environment and the recreation parks and open space. On Monday, April 22nd, we discussed the economic vitality goals and policies. And so we have transportation, utilities, and capital facilities remaining discussion items with Planning Commission. Maybe I'll stop there for any questions before I move on.
Are there any, I'll go ahead, remember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jonathan, seeing the subarea outreach and know that from my time on Planning Commission, that this has been sort of a long, long-burning desire to to do this, this type of outreach. Just wondering if you can sort of speak to how this sort of dovetails into sort of the the greater sort of subarea effort, that subarea outreach work and and planning that I know that we, that Planning Commission's been, been discussing for a while now. And I guess more, more, more to the point, so when might we know about those, those community meetings?
Yeah, so we've initiated some ideas for what those workshops could look like. I don't have a definite answer at this moment. We do need to coordinate with our engagement consultant on that, as well as identify a space in the Melody Hill neighborhood. So one thing we're thinking of is seeing if the Premier Campus can, can lease, not leases, yeah, allow us to use some of their, their space for that event. Unless, if there's any ideas for where we can possibly have a workshop in Melody Hill neighborhood or even Cascade, we're open to ideas as well.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say, I'll hold most of my stuff till the end, but I guess I wanted to ask a follow-up question about Councilmember Payne Donovan's question and your response, Jonathan. So I guess since you had mentioned that perhaps you would cover both subareas in Melody Hill, is that just because of lack of space? I guess I do think that there's value in meeting people where they are, and I love, I was, I have all sorts of complimentary things I've already written down about outreach and engagement, but I will, again, I think we'll probably wait till the end to, but I guess I'm curious about the thoughts of only holding one and maybe what the barriers are and if there are, those are things that perhaps we can work on.
Sure. What comes to mind first is a, just a capacity question to have another engagement event. But that's something we can discuss with our engagement consultant and staff to see if it, I, I do agree, it would be good to have two separate workshops that are targeted, but yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think particularly if we are going out to one of our neighborhoods and we are looking at subarea plans for both of them, the idea of going to one and not the other, you know, it seems like if capacity ultimately is the challenge, that perhaps having something in the middle here at City Hall versus going out there, if that really is a deal breaker, seems kind of more equitable than having the folks from Cascade View have to go to Melody Hill to hear about what's going on in their neighborhood. So, yeah, thank you.
And if we did go the one workshop route, the thinking of focusing on Melody Hill was because that was a neighborhood that we didn't really hear from with the survey. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence to prioritize an engagement event in that neighborhood.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. This may seem very elementary, but the subareas are listed, Melody here, Hill and Cascade View. But for the people listening, what is a subarea?
Yeah. I don't have a textbook answer for that.
The cities, I'll give it a go. The city's been divided into separate areas that are identified by collective neighborhoods and a lot of times around commercial nodes and areas throughout the city. And so there was a process previously where the city was divided into six different subareas, of which we can plan around those particular areas. There's been two subarea plans that were completed by the, the city previously. Town Center and Melody Hill also has a subarea plan. And as Councilmember Payne Donovan expressed, the Planning Commission for many, many years has wanted to do subarea planning for each subarea. So it's, wasn't just to say, hey, we think that Melody Hill or Cascade is more important for these areas of the city over others. It was more of an attempt by Planning Commission and staff to start that ball rolling and get subarea planning underway as part of our comprehensive planning process with the intent of going back and doing all of the subareas as well. So that's the intent of, of how we're progressing.
Thank you very much. One more, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And some other comments, I just, a reaction to the Planning Commission speaking about subareas and outreaches and communities. And I'm sure the Planning Commission is working hard on our Washington State mandated Growth Management Act. So if no one in the public kind of knows that, they, they want to look that up, Growth Management Act. And what we have to do as a city mandated by the state of Washington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I was a little surprised to hear that the Melody Hill people didn't come out in groves like they did in the past.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's been something we identified as an area we want to ensure that we're targeting.
Because they had a lot of wants in the past, I, I don't think we've delivered it all. But I, I know that with, with the growth that we're having, I, I don't want them to give up. Thank you.
So going on with the growth alternative, so we did have an update. So our last meeting, we presented the three growth alternative, growth alternatives that we wanted to move forward with that were recommended by the Planning Commission and the Comprehensive Plan Advisor Group. We got approval from council to move forward with these. And so part of the process is taking the parcel level data and converting those to housing, population, and job numbers as it relates to the 2044 growth targets that are provided to us by the Office of Financial Management in Snohomish County. So as you recall, we had a no-action scenario, which basically was doing the bare minimum and just going with what the state is requiring in terms of HB 1110, that's middle housing, and HB 1337, which is ADUs. And then we had two other, other alternatives. Alternative two was meeting the growth. Alternative two was meeting the growth targets, and alternative three was exceeding those growth targets. So we had some land use assumptions, and when we received the numbers from the consultants, it was, in our minds, a little too aggressive to do effective planning. And so we wanted to take those numbers to the Planning Commission. So we presented those to Planning Commission on April 8th, and they provided some feedback and ways to move forward. So we came up with two new alternatives, two and three, and so wanted to quickly walk through that with you. So again, these are three growth alternatives. So, status quo, meaning growth alternatives, sorry, meeting the growth targets, and the longer-range growth alternative. So, what's before you is the two new... Sorry that it's small on the screen, but I can quickly talk through what has changed. Let's see. So, alternative two, the new one, is planning for four-to-six-story mixed-use housing and commercial nodes and near transit, and the, near the transit station. So that's on the left side there, that's the light purple. That's just south of the Town Center area, south of 236. You see some light purple in Melody Hill, as well as the, in Cascade View and Cedar Plaza. Let's see. And then fourplexes are the light brown parcels. So that's, I'm planning for fourplex units. And then the remaining is maintaining single-family zones. We did extend the transitional zone on alternative two. So that's allowing for townhouses, as well as three-to-four-story middle housing. On alternative three, we took back some of the assumptions in the Cascade View north end there. So, previously that was off six-to-eight TOD, or Transit Oriented Development. So now we have some parcels that are Transit Oriented Development, and then the light purple is four-to-six-story mixed use. We have three-to-four-story middle housing along transit corridors, and then fourplexes and single-family zones. And so with these changes, we do have new numbers that we wanted to walk through. So, our 2044 target for housing is 16,816 units. For population is 34,710 persons, and then 11,148 jobs. With the no-action scenario, we're seeing a, that we're not meeting our housing or population targets, but we are meeting the jobs targets. With the new alternative two, we are exceeding the 2044 target and planning for 19,141 units and 39,223 population, so slightly above the 2044 target. For jobs, exceeding the target by 13,796. With alternative three, that's sort of our high-end, bookend. For housing, that's 26,760 units, 54,837 population, and then 15,274 jobs. So when we put the alternatives together and do that baseline analysis and convert those to parcel-level data, this is what we have come back with for the updated alternatives. And so we have instructed the consultants to move forward with these assumptions. And so the transportation consultant is starting on their analysis for the draft environmental impact statement. So that's, that was a lot to share, but I think I have one more slide. So we're also required to show capacity by income levels, as required by the HB 1220. So when we put the numbers together, for the no-action, we're showing a surplus of units at the 0% to 80% AMI level, area median income, and we're at a deficit for 80% to 120% of the area median income. For alternative two, we are showing a surplus capacity of units at 0% to 80% AMI, a surplus at 80% to 120, and a deficit at 120 area median income. And for alternative three, we're showing a surplus of 9,720 units between the 0% to 80% area median income, a surplus in 80% to 120, so that's 2,659 units of surplus, and a deficit at 120% AMI. So, as part of the... Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know you had some questions also, but while we're on this, how? How are we ensuring affordable housing for zero? How are we gonna have more than enough affordable housing and not have enough high-end housing when housing is so expensive? And I don't, I don't get it. How do we understand how we're gonna have so much additional capacity for low-income housing?
So it's partly the methods that are used as required by Department of Commerce when putting together this analysis. So it's grouped by, in terms of the levels, the income levels, it's grouped by the housing So, as we know, that we're required to plan for more dense housing. So at the 0% to 80% area median income, the thinking there from the Department of Commerce is that the types of housing is more like multifamily apartments, whereas for 120% AMI, what Department of Commerce considers that is more like single-family housing. With the new requirements, we're gonna see less single-family housing being developed because we're gonna be required to implement more middle housing, accessory dwelling units, multifamily developments. So, I think that's partly why you're seeing the deficit there of the higher income. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that.
I would say it's methodology, and it's just how the methodology has been put together. Will we actually see that equate to that we're reaching those populations? I think we can all assume that that's not the case, but it's how the methodology has been put forth by the Department of Commerce and what we need to use. So like Jonathan's saying, what we're doing, or what you're seeing is, what we're studying for growth alternatives is a lot of multifamily, smaller garden apartments, multi-level accessory dwelling units. And so when you plug it into the numbers, this is kind of what you see. Will that equate on the ground to more affordable housing? Yes, it will, in some aspects. Will it equate to this type of affordability? I think not.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that, and of course, we do need to meet state standards. And so, if this helps us get there, that's great, but we do need to consider what comes on the ground, and we do need to take additional measures to think about affordable housing, especially realistically, zero to 30... Anyway.
Right. Did you have a question? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, along those lines, I think I would find it beneficial, you know, at the appropriate point in the process here, you know, in this band of zero to 80% affordability, or AMI, rather, understanding, especially in that sort of zero to 30% banding, like what we can do, what dials to turn, et cetera, to make sure we can sort of get some of that built, and what that, what that looks like, and where it might be situated, and what other sort of colors we can put on the, on the map here to, you know, and standards, et cetera, to make sure that we're doing our best to draw that, that type of housing in. And I realize that there's probably other inputs to getting that built. I know there are lots of complexities there, but I think to, to the mayor pro tams point would be helpful, I think, for us and the community to understand what that looks like and how we, how we get down that road. And then while I'm on the mic here, I had a question about Slide 16 and some of the colors on the map there in the alternative two and three, in that 212 zone, especially in that north, northeastern corner of Mount Lake Terrace. Understand that we're talking about sort of allowing certain typologies to be built there, and just seeing the, I think, fourplexes allowed in that swath. I'm curious to get your feedback on the fact that the current, current sort of norm there for apartment buildings and some of the condoized apartment buildings up there, I think is probably denser than what is on, on these alternatives currently. So, wondering how that plays out in the future. And I think also just editorialize that I think whatever alternative or modified version of what we've got here, I think there's a real need to put some more planning thought into that area. I think that that's a place now where there's probably some of the most affordable units currently in town, and it's, I think that area deserves a lot more sort of planning attention in terms of how we're looking at community amenities. We're talking about, you know, childcare and the, and safety along our arterials from car drivers. I was just riding my bike trying to cross 44th last night and was struck by... I wasn't struck, I was, I observed people going way too fast on that, in that zone. And I think as we're, as we're having conversations about what this, what this plan envisions, putting some, some real thought about, you know, any redevelopment that might occur there, and how it like centers, you know, people and the people who live there are probably the least economically able amongst our neighbors. So, I'll, I'll stop babbling at that point. But I would, would like to hear your response about sort of how any of these alternatives jive with, with current land use standards.
Yeah, so just a correction, where you pointed to the Cascade North End, the northeast. Yeah, so we're actually maintaining the multi-household medium-density zones, so that's actually orange, that's not fourplexes. And then the light purple is four-to, four-to-six-story mixed-use housing, and then the darker purple is six-to-eight-story TOD development. So that is an area where we heard, a lot of feedback on concerns about potential displacement, so finding ways to mitigate any displacement impacts is something that we're identifying through this comprehensive plan update process. So I believe there's an affordable housing development on alternative three. It's the very northeast corner, the orange shading, that's a affordable housing development, I believe. So, yeah. So we're maintaining that existing zoning and not proposing any changes to the zone there. Let's see. Yeah, but alternative two is less aggressive in that region, whereas alternative three is just identifying more potential for higher density.
I think it's an attempt to, and I agree with Councilmember Payne Donovan, that this is one of the reasons why that subarea was picked, and also in proximity to Linwood Light Rail Station as well, and we know that there's gonna be growth pressures. I think it's trying to preserve some existing affordable housing stock within the city and not upzone it to the point where displacement is going to occur, but also realize that there's pockets that could potentially be redeveloped. I just wanted to reiterate why we're doing growth alternatives. We haven't picked a preferred alternative as part of the comp plan. We're, we're still in this process. These alternatives are just for study, so we're not locked into alternative one, two, or three. That's something that we'll be working with you folks for. This is just to put the sideboards on from the lowest to the highest, and through this process, we'll get to what that preferred alternative is with Planning Commission and City Council. So, the reason we came back and modified these a bit was because we just thought with transportation, capital facilities, of having to supply water, sewer, and, and other issues with environmental issues, when we got the population numbers, we kind of freaked out because it was very aggressive, and said, let's tamp these back down to be more realistic. So we still have that range for you folks to consider, but in a more realistic fashion when we go through this study. So that's why we, we modified them and just wanted to take them back to the Planning Commission to make sure that we had buy-in. But this is just for study purposes at this point.
We are, yes. Yep.
We have questions. Okay, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to, I was gonna say, if you had something to finish with the slide we have been on, I wanted to make sure that we did that, but if now's the time for kind of questions and comments on the first section, I'd love to jump in. And I will, I guess, again, say thank yous and all this stuff till the end, and maybe just look at questions that I had as we were going through. I guess I'm curious in terms of kind of just what we are calling things. I know currently we call, we have like single-family zoning, and I know here I see it's residential for duplexes and single-family or fourplexes, but then we have different, we have kind of more defined categories as terms of future land uses to be studied. I guess I'm just curious if we are thinking intentionally about that. Like I think the idea that fourplexes and under are residential, but people who live in middle housing or apartment buildings, those aren't residences. Like I guess I want us to be cognizant of like the impact of like the words we use. And so I'm curious if there's been conversation about that at CPAG or Planning Commission.
That's a good point. There has not been conversations on that, but for alternative two, residential should actually read single-family and duplexes, because we're required to allow for duplexes. And then alternative three has the correct verbiage there. Three-to-four-story middle housing, is your recommendation to put residential?
Well, I think, I mean, it's either all residential, right? I mean, these are all, we're all, we're talking about residents in all of them, so I think it's either all residential with definitions of what that means in that area, or we are maybe just defining what that is in that. I guess it's just, it's not consistent, and it feels like we are talking about residents regardless of kind of the capacity in that space. So, yeah, I would love for us to revisit that.
Another reason that that happens is because when you get into fourplexes or more, it turns into commercial, commercial building standards. So you have to do all the same things that you would for a commercial building. So, I understand where you're coming from. This is kind of, that's how that happens, because the standards change.
Okay. I was, I feel like I've looked at some kind of other, where other communities are at, trying to just understand this process, and they seem to be using more consistent terminology, either around density. And so I guess I would love us to at least have kind of, see if there's a way to be more consistent, and would love, when we come back and look at it again, love to understand that a little better. Not sure what that was. All right, so that was first thing.
I just want to just say that...
Yes, go ahead.
Residential, in real estate, up to four, up to a fourplex is a different type of a loan, and then from anything fiveplex on is a different kind of loan. And so I think that's, but everything is residential. Multifamily is residential, so we can probably say, simplify it.
Just grab the word residential.
Residential, period, if someone's gonna live there.
of standalone copies of these alternatives with like the definitions for each of the future land uses? Or is that something that's still being developed?
We can provide that.
Okay, I think that would be helpful. There's a lot here and it's hard to dig into in this format. And I know we're going to get lots of questions about that and lots of people interested in doing so. So I think that would be helpful as we continue in the process. I am curious about the, when we got the capacity number, well, actually, let me ask my first question first. I'm curious currently what our zone capacity is and what percentage of that zone capacity has actually been built.
We do have that data, but I don't have it in front of me, so I can't speak to it.
I guess, and the reason I ask is because, I mean, we look at these numbers and I hear you. When I, when I see, you know, the idea of growing to like 55,000 or whatever, 54th, whatever the number was, I mean, that's a lot of people. It's a lot more than we have now. And I'm sure that residents just like me would be like, wow, that, I mean, that's a lot. And I'm sure that's how you felt as well. And I want to recognize that what we zone for and what gets built and when it gets built are not the same thing, right? So I would love to understand what we have zoned for now, how much of that's actually been built, and then kind of think about that in framing when we're thinking about what these numbers are. Just because we zoned for that doesn't mean that tomorrow our community is going to have 55,000 people. Doesn't mean that 20 years from now, realistically, our community will probably have 55,000 people. And so I think that's an important context for us to be having these conversations around. And so would, yeah, would love that as we continue in the process. I had one more, I feel like. I'm curious about that piece. So I was gonna say, no matter what alternative we look at, when we're looking at those numbers, I was gonna say, so where is our population growth with no action goes from 30,000 to 55,000? And yes, those are rough numbers. You know, our jobs growth only goes from, you know, just under 13,000. I mean, it's only a growth of 24,000 between no action and our most kind of, and our Alternative 3. I guess I'm curious about that, particularly when we think about the idea that, I think our, right now, we've identified that very few people live and work in Mount Lake Terrace. I think it was like 400, right? And the idea that we ideally want a community where people can live, work, and play so they don't have to get in their cars and we don't have as much traffic impact from these increased residents. I guess I'm curious how we only got to 15,000 and if there, I guess, if there has been conversation about potentially getting to a higher number there.
Where are the grocery stores?
I didn't ask that, but-
I mean-
I have the same job.
We all want to know.
Yeah. A lot of these numbers are based on assumptions and there's also the methodologies that we're using here. But in terms of jobs, it's looking at what our buildable land is and what we have capacity for in terms of jobs. And, yeah, I guess I'm not entirely sure.
I mean, we're constrained. We're four square miles and we have constraints on capacity for jobs. And so I think it's also looking at alternative ways for looking at jobs versus the traditional way that we've looked at jobs, where, you know, you go to this place for a job, and providing a range of opportunities for people to work in the city as well, also in the residential areas, as well as, oh, this is zoned commercial, this is zoned industrial, and those type of things. But, I mean, we're, we have, you know, frankly, we have limitations and constraints just by the virtue of our size. And so that's where you're not really seeing a lot of changes. I would say for the grocery stores and for other land uses, that's where we get into the zoning and the ability for people to be able to develop these things. So we're always, of course, going to be looking for the opportunity in a lot of these areas for people to do those things.
Go ahead. Thank you, Kristi, I appreciate it. And, yeah, fully recognize that we are four square miles and that is not a lot of space, you know, and we seem to be able to develop housing capacity. So I guess I'm just curious, do we not feel like the jobs number is really reflective of the amount of people who will be working in our community because the nature of work has changed and will change? Or, I mean, like, is there, I guess, is there, is there a way for us to locate more jobs here from a planning process perspective? Maybe that's what I need to ask. Like, is this, I mean, if it's economic development and it's a separate part of the conversation, fine, but if we don't have the space for the jobs, like, that's, I guess I would love to understand if there is more work we need to do here in this part of the comprehensive planning process to facilitate more people being able to live and work in our community.
Yeah, I think that's where we're, we're working on the economic strategic plan in addition to the comprehensive plan, is to identify those opportunities for the community. So I think that there's an emphasis that's being placed on that versus just coming up with an economic element in our comp plan. What can we do? What can we target in these particular areas? So I think that it's the parallel process that's going on right now, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. And I will just name, I do think space is an important component, and I think we've heard that both from long-term businesses who would love to continue to be central parts of our neighborhood, as well as from people who have located in neighboring communities because they couldn't find space in ours. So I will say, I think space is an important part of, you know, continuing to have great, you know, economic development and businesses here locally, as well as, you know, making sure that this is sustainable as we plan, so.
I can probably add one little thing to that. If one of the six-to-eight, 12-story buildings would be an office building, that would bring in some jobs. Because we don't need all of them to be, you know, for apartments. And also, as we grow and get more restaurants and retail and so forth, that's jobs right there, too. All right, we're done.
All right, yeah, I want to be, want to be mindful of time and the other items on the agenda. So just wanted to quickly go through some high-level comments on the land use and housing element goals and policies. So comments that we received from CPAG and Planning Commission. And so you should have received a consolidated packet with all the comments, so you can read that on your own time. But wanted to quickly go through some comments. So in terms of the land use element, there was a lot of comments about sort of words that we were using, whether it's passive versus directive wording. There was support for, I'm using more directive wording in our policy statements to ensure that it's actionable and speaks to the implementation. So we're supportive of that. There are comment about coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions, so saying that that should not preclude the city from zoning more intense density uses, activities. So part of this regional work is coordinating with nearby jurisdictions and ensuring that we're having these conversations on land use impact and transportation and things like that. There's discussion on further, discussion needed on how to incentivize and be innovative in meeting the goal of quality design, so speaking to design standards, and without creating barriers to development. So barriers such as the cost of producing housing and construction. So there was a recommendation to look at how we can better regulate design and development, and then how we determine what quality of design is to be. There was interest in looking at employment and living opportunities and commercial cores outside of town center, so not just focusing on the town center, but also in other areas where we have commercial uses. So Melody Hill, Cedar Terrace, sorry, Cedar Plaza, and Cascade View, area where the Safeway Shopping Area is. And then what is the impact of lot consolidation, larger development versus infill on smaller lots?
Did you have something on this piece? We have another question.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just, on design standards, I was just curious, have, because we have, we've adopted design standards-
Right.
Town Center, right. Have we found those to be a challenge for the development community? Or, I mean, do we, do we have the right design standards or are we, do we need to relook at those? In other words, why are we getting pushback on the wording here? You know, in other words, if somebody's questioning it's because, I guess, there's a concern? So I'm just curious what that concern is based on our current design standards and what, how they've been working so far and what we think maybe we need to take a look at.
Yeah. I haven't heard any concerns about the current town center design standards. I don't know, Kristi, do you have?
I feel like they've been quite successful. We have an open dialogue. We have an administrative process. I would say staff is very cued into design, but also realizing we're trying to develop town center. But we get one chance at what we're doing. So design is important. We use Makers Architecture to help us in that review of that design. So we haven't got any complaints about design standards. I would say we get more comments about parking and the cost of providing parking, and that's where we tend to get the most comment and concern, just because of the cost of that. But really, I think we've worked quite well with everybody on our larger developments. And, believe me, I've tweaked a lot of the design and we've, we've come out friends, so, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, because I could, and thank you. And that's what I had assumed. I just, when I saw that, I mean, because we already have design standards in place, and so when I saw that there was concern about policy LU 1.1, about, what does it say here? To promote quality design and development through the application and continual enhancement of the city's urban design standards. And there was, there was concern there, and I just, I don't understand why there was concern if we already have it in place.
Yeah, and I think that could be more to talking about housing and some of the require, some of the new requirements potentially for housing. And so, hey, we want more affordable housing to be created, and yet we have new building codes and other things that add to the cost of each housing unit. And so, you know, are we creating a lot of barriers based on code for affordable housing? To me, that's where I think we're going to see the most impact versus the commercial and some of this other development that we're doing.
Okay, so to help clarify in my mind, it sounds like the concern is based on additional future requirements, not on our current design standards?
Yeah, unless, I'm thinking that that's a comment that we've heard, which is more from the residential realm with some of the new energy code standards and some of the other things that people are going to be up against as far as development goes.
Right. And I agree, there are challenges on all the different requirements that go into building a home and how that, those costs add up. And we wonder why housing is so expensive. Well, a lot of it is based on what we require, so. But, no, I appreciate that. That helps clarify in my mind what the challenge there was. Thank you.
So another recommendation was to discourage surface parking, encourage placemaking on private and public property. So placemaking is utilizing space to activate those areas for different uses, so entertainment, more walkable areas, pedestrian-oriented areas, for example. And then mitigate impacts to historically marginalized communities while also strengthening these communities. That was something that was recommended in our policy review. In terms of questions that Planning Commission needed more context on, so we have a policy on food access and supporting food access, such as through community gardens, farmers' markets, et cetera. So clarifying how the city can impact food access policy. And then a question here about, could that be through grocery stores? So that was comment. We had policy on, on engaging with the Snoomish County Tomorrow Process. So that is the body, that is, all the cities, jurisdictions within Snoomish County come together to provide input on the, how development is shaping in terms of county-wide planning policies, new regulations. And then how is the transfer of development rights and LCLIP? So that's, sorry, I always forget. LCLIP is the Landscape Conservation and Local Infrastructure Program. So that's a tool that could be used for allowing density bonuses, for example. So the question here is, how can that be applicable to a city like Mount Lake Terrace?
Do you have a question? Okay.
Thank you. Quick question, Jonathan.
Yes.
So the discouraged surface parking, I think if I'm, I guess this is where I'm curious about like the definitions of different zones. I think currently, if I'm remembering correctly, we allow new surface parking lots to be built in the transition zone. I guess I'm curious if we're looking at, you know, the definition of zones as part of these, I guess, policy, high-level, you know, policy goals.
That's part of it. So this right here is just a policy-specific language. When we get to the point where we're updating code and standards, we would go through that process to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you.
So on to the housing element. Again, feedback on the language we're using for the policy. So the difference between allowing something versus saying that the city will do something, I think, something that was stressed by the Planning Commission in terms of being more specific in what we mean in our policy development. Another one was zoning and citing requirements should be maintained for permanent supportive housing and emergency housing shelters. So it's part of HB 1220, we're required to plan for permanent supportive housing and emergency housing. So ensuring that the same standards we apply to other developments are also applied to these types of housing was a recommendation. Again, there are specific requirements by the state, so we do need to ensure that we're meeting those standards. Policies related to housing for special needs might be too vague. So does the city sit on a board or contribute to partner agencies or organizations that engage sort of advocacy around special needs populations? Further discussion of the value of older housing stock versus preservation policies. So how does this impact the resiliency of existing housing stock, such as emergency preparedness, seismic retrofits of existing structures? And then in terms of policy, 1.2 recommendation that this could be split into several different policies to be more specific on how to produce affordable rental housing. Any questions before I move on?
I guess, you know, for ten, we all have questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, a couple of things on the, I think we want to talk a little bit about affordable ownership opportunities and affordable rental opportunities. There's, because there's two different, two very different ways of going about making each of those happen. And so I think we want to spend, I'd like to see us spend a little bit of time on each of those areas. And then when it comes to affordable rental housing, yes, we do serve on several different boards and, and I, so obviously, we should be pointing out HASCO and, and how we can create opportunities and work together with HASCO and the different services that they provide for affordable housing and, and whatever we need to do to attract more of those types of investments and bring more of those resources to our community. AHA, obviously, is another area that we're, we serve on a board and work together for affordable housing opportunities. And I'd like to see us spend some time working- And I'd like to see us spend some time working as a South County region, because we can't do it on our own, everything. And, you know, that's, there's the affordable housing issues, there's, there's mental health issues, there's all these different challenges that we all share a common need to address these challenges in this region. And we can't, and we, none of us really have the resources on our own as individual cities to do it well ourselves. That's why we have the Linwood Neighborhood Center, for instance, a great resource to be able to work as a South County region together to address these challenges and needs of marginalized groups, right? So, I'd like to see us spend a little bit of time talking about that in the housing element as well, focusing on the need for us to work together as a, as a region to address these affordable housing challenges and providing the, especially for the 0% to 30%, and all the different pieces of, of 0% to 30% that need to be addressed to help meet the needs of those in our community and, in our region.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my question would be, how are we gonna pay for that in our region, and where do we get those monies?
Thank you. And, and that is a great question. Part of it is that we are paying a 0.1% sales tax for that very reason. It's all going to the county, however. And the reason we need to work together as a region is to be able to work to bring those funds to our South County region. Because, again, we can't, we can't say, as Mount Lake Terrace, hey, we want our share, because that share isn't gonna be enough to be able to address the full need. But if we're working together as a, as a region of Edmonds, Linwood, Mount Lake Terrace, Breyer, whoever else might want to be considered part of the South County, that's how we're gonna be able to start addressing those needs and, and stand, going to the county and saying, we need those dollars here for this regional need that we're addressing.
Yeah.
It's still not gonna be enough, but, but that's how, that's, that's at least a piece of it, and what we need to do to be able to start attracting those dollars to our region.
And I do believe that you guys have heard us say that before, but I think the other concerns are, we have other things going against us, whereas they're looking at, the companies that are looking at making sure all the rents are all the same, you know, preserving the rents and not having concierge fees, and there's, and the building cost and the builder's cost. So, it's always kind of like chasing our tail, and it's, it's very hard. And we've gone from not wanting it in our city to wanting it in our city. And so I think our population has changed, and not only are there other factors involved, it's just not easy. So, that's why I'm listening intently, but I, I know you understand the concerns too, and it's a lot to deal with. And the one thing, I agree with what Erin said, I don't think a lot of our people in our city understand what's going on. I know I talk about it to friends and about how much growth will be coming in in the next 20 years, and they're like, no, that won't happen. I'm like, we're planning for it right now, and they're still like, no. But when I look at the numbers too, I see that we're gonna grow by 10,710 people, and we're gonna put in 7,683. So we're thinking that a lot of people will only be living alone. I mean, it's, it seems a little bit disproportionate on the number of housing units that are coming in. And so I think, and it, and it's not something that I'm saying to change or anything, it's just sometimes we just don't know what's gonna be brought into the city, and that's sometimes where we're looking so much at the con plan to kind of control how that comes into the city. So, if I'm not saying a lot, I'm just listening intently, and, and I know that you know your stuff, so, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question, just to clarify understanding here. So we're, the policy review process, and then we have the policy document. So, but, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, what, what are you asking from us tonight? What do we have time for? Like, we're at the end of like your little timeline on the, on, so I guess I want to just make sure I understand, like, is this coming back to us at some point? And like, what is the process between now and that? Like, I think just to frame, like, what I'm asking questions about, what I'm sharing feedback on, and kind of the level of detail that we're getting into tonight, and also maybe potentially in the future.
Yeah. So the purpose of the briefings are to provide sort of like high-level overview of how the policies are shaping up as we have gone through them with CPAG Group and Planning Commission. So it's an opportunity just to share some preliminary feedback. Where you will be more intensely, like, providing feedback will be when we get to the point of the draft review process. So, when Planning Commission forwards a recommendation for the draft plan, it will then come to you for review. And so we've set aside about three to four meetings, I believe, to go through the whole document and, and really pinpoint how we're shaping it and if there's any edits needed, changes to policies, and things like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Continue.
Okay. So another comment for the housing element was allowing for innovation in housing development types, be flexible in defining, including, include small lot development. So that was a recommendation that we emphasize, small lot development. In terms of new topics or where more context is needed, suggestion for new policies related to economic integration and spectrum of housing security. Explore public-private partnerships and how the city can ensure that we can make it happen, so producing affordable housing and things like that. In terms of ADU, a recommendation to explore pre-approved or standardized plans. So many jurisdictions have sort of pre-approved ADU plans that applicants can sort of select from and, and build their ADUs based on something that's already approved by the city. And then clarify what affordable housing for all income level means.
Oh, boy. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think we've already talked about it a number of these themes already, but I really do like that, that we, that there's intent or interest in fleshing out the public-private partnerships. I think we're talking about nonprofit housing developers here, but also, in my mind, you know, how you get, you know, community amenities. And, you know, we're talking about LCLIPS and other sort of, you know, carrots and tools to get, get community benefit. I'm really interested in, in thinking, you know, I realize we're talking about planning sort of level stuff, but I think there, there are real opportunities to provide, you know, especially here in Town Center, but, but this could be elsewhere in, I think, dense zones in the city. Provide flexibility to developers to get, you know, community meeting spaces or, or other, other nice things. And in terms of ADUs, I like what we're, where we're going in terms of standardized or, or, you know, other approaches where, where we might reduce barriers to building ADUs. I think it's also worth naming that our current ADU standard doesn't really allow anyone in a small cinder block home to build an ADU without putting out a lot of, a lot of capital to basically build a new house. I think our current standard for 40%, you know what I'm referring to, is upside down and inhibits sort of a actual ADU building. And so it'd be nice to have a, sort of a flatter or more standardized approach where whatever the, the current primary residence might be, that ADUs could, could be built without, without sort of a, an exercise in building a much different structure. I think that's, that's something that a lot of people are frustrated by when it comes to thinking about ADUs. So, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, a few weeks ago, I went to a conference where Seattle talks about their ADU. And I thought, wow, because you can, and this is Seattle, it's not Mount Lake Terrace, but it's being done. First of all, they have the, the plans that, that you could just choose from, A, B, C. And then you don't have to pay extra for those. So that's streamlined that way. And then the, the other thing is, you could put up to three units. You can put, detach is one, and then attach, you can add two more units to, to your home. And then you can condominiumize all of that and sell it off and make one by one, which is really truly affordable housing right there. I don't know if we can go quite that far in Mount Lake Terrace, but it is, it is something that is being done, and that is one way of getting inventory into the, into the city that is gonna be affordable. Just thought I'd put, put that in. Well, that's, that's, I, I need to talk to you about that, because that is being done. Not, well, it was being done here, not, not in Mount Lake Terrace. No, it's Seattle.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I can talk to you about that. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Question about just the pre-approved standardized plans. Do those exist, and is that a regular thing for things outside of ADUs? I guess I'm just curious in terms of how we, I mean, I think ADUs are great, and I don't think ADUs are gonna solve our housing challenge alone. So I guess I'm curious if there are other types of kind of, you know, denser housing that have kind of a standardized or pre-approved process in other communities?
Yeah. There's things like modular housing, which you see in different jurisdictions around, around the nation. So, sort of like stacking modular buildings for higher-density housing. So there's, those are, I think, one example. Sorry? Yeah?
A lot of standardized plans, excuse me, have been done for like, where you're doing a major subdivision, and there's like six plans that are pre-approved and, you know, I, you know, I mix them up and put a little bit different lipstick on them. But we really don't, we haven't really had a lot of major subdivisions as, you know, just because of land. We had a couple, you know, about three years back. But, so I've seen that used a lot in those cases of where you're doing larger developments as well. So, it kind of varies how people have used those.
Okay. And not so much for like infill sorts of development that's higher density than what exists, like perhaps we're trending towards?
Yeah. And I mean, we can take a look and explore what some, some folks are doing, you know, for ADUs, basically what we have in code right now is definitely not meeting new state requirements, and so we'll have to totally redo code. So, a, part of this is setting up for what's going to be, and we'll talk about it more on, on Saturday for my part, but basically, I'm looking at revising a lot of our existing code language for development.
Okay. Thanks, Kristi. Yeah, I guess I'd be curious, like, if we haven't kind of looked into opportunities there. I mean, I don't know if that is desirable, but I guess I'd be curious to, yeah, have those conversations. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we can continue on.
Okay, so, almost there. So, our next meeting, we will go over the environment and recreation parks and open space policy comments. So this is our policy review process that we previously presented to you. So we go through an equity assessment, there's notes and comments from our consultant team to staff that we review and provide feedback on. We look at related elements of policies, ensuring that it's consistent and coordinated. We look at our state, regional, and county requirements, ensuring that the policies comply with those. And then we also look at some best practices, existing guidance, and regional suggestions. So, those are typically the policies that you'll see in the policy matrix that are highlighted in yellow. For Planning Commission, we have a three-step approach. So, one meeting will introduce a topic. So, we'll introduce the purpose of the element and also draft goals. Second meeting is distributing the actual policy matrix, so similar to what was provided in your packet. And then the third meeting is to have the actual discussion of Planning Commission comments and feedback. So, next meeting, like I said, environment. The purpose of this element is to incorporate goals and policies on the treatment of critical areas, urban forestry management, and environmental education. Incorporate sustainability and resiliency goals related to greenhouse gas emissions reduction, natural hazard mitigation planning, resiliency to climate change, including natural hazards, and waste reduction and energy efficiency. So these are sort of the bullet points of, of the purpose of, of the policies and speaking to these. Proposed draft goals, protect natural resource areas and critical areas to ensure is clean air, clean water, and a healthy environment. That's goal one. Goal two, engage with all members of the community to promote active public participation and education in the environmental planning process. Goal three, preserve and maintain the urban tree canopy through urban forestry management. Goal four, take actions that will promote environmental resiliency. And goal five, take actions that will reduce the production or spread of greenhouse gases. For recreation parks and open space, the purpose of this is to retain open space, enhance recreation opportunities, conserve fish and wildlife habitat, increase access to natural resource, land, and water, and develop parks and recreation facilities. Another purpose, to incorporate goals and policies to guide the city's approaches to recreation and parks in the coming years, and provide guidance for the regular update of the city's recreation park and open space master plan. So, that was recently adopted, and I believe the end date of that is 2026, so they'll be coming forward with another update to that master plan. And then proposed draft goals, goal one, ensure Mount Lake Terrace's parks, recreation facilities, and open spaces serve the needs of the current and future population. Goal two, provide a variety of recreation opportunities that support the health, wellness, and engagement of all community members. Goal three, promote connectivity between parks, recreation facilities, open spaces, and schools, residential areas, employment centers, and key community destinations. Goal four, use the park, recreation, and open space system to provide opportunities for the Mount Lake Terrace community to foster connections and enhance neighborhood involvement. And goal five, utilize park and open space systems to emphasize and protect the environmental qualities and natural amenities within the city. So just a note, we will be taking the policy review process to the RPAC Committee at their next meeting, May 14th. So we wanted to give them an opportunity to review the policies as they're proposed right now. I'm sure that we're also providing, gaining their input. In terms of next steps, so we have, again, CPAG on May 1st. Planning Commission, we meet twice a month, so both of their meetings. The DIC, we meet on an as-needed basis, but we will be going to their June 19th meeting to provide an update and also have an opportunity for discussion on the policies, especially those that are equity-related. City Council, again, briefing every other month until September, then we'll be moving to the adoption discussion. And community engagement is ongoing, and we will continue to have updates on things that are being planned. So June 27th will be coming before you to discuss environment, recreation parks, and open space. In August, transportation, economic vitality, capital facilities, and utilities. And then September 12th is where we plan to begin the formal review process. With that.
Anyone? Oh. Did you have your hand up? Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, a couple more questions, and I'll say all my thank yous. But, could we go back and look at the proposed draft goals for the recreation parks and open space? open space?
Yep.
Can I make a quick plug for adding accessible to number two? So I think it's great to provide those things, but if they're not accessible in terms of location, ability, and cost, I feel like we're missing the mark a little in what we're trying to do. And then for number three, I would love to at least have the conversation about including, you know, publicly facing businesses, retail. I don't know how we want to describe that, but I think employment centers is a little bit different, and as we think about connectivity, I think thinking about how our rec and parks and open space, you know, connect with the businesses in our community is an important consideration. So those would be my two plugs about kind of proposed draft goals coming up. Outside of that, thank you. I know this is a big task. I know I had lots of questions. Thank you for humoring all of them. I want to just, I think particularly, go back and say thank you again for all of the intentional work around outreach and engagement with our community, both all the stuff that's already happened, as well as all of the work that's still ahead. You know, I think that is incredibly important, and I just, I appreciate it very much, how central that has been, I think, to the planning and execution of this process. I'll just leave it there. So thank you. I appreciate all of the work, both, you know, staff here, as well as the rest of our staff and CPAG and our planning commission and our consultants and everybody else involved in the process. Thanks.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Rick, did you, okay. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, yeah, thank you. This is a huge lift, and you guys are doing a great job pulling it together. I was worried about it for a few years, but we're getting there, so thank you. I should have asked this question way back in the beginning, but I thought I'd wait until the end, and then now it seems out of place. But I'm curious, to what extent are we, so back to the Melody Hill subarea plan. You know, we did a subarea plan for Melody Hill years ago. I'm just curious, to what extent are we even looking at it, tapping into it, putting, you know, when we looked at the growth alternatives for two and three, was any of the subarea plan that we had adopted 15 years ago?
I think a lot of it has changed.
Even incorporated into those alternatives? In other words, we have an adopted policy that has sat on a shelf, and we really haven't paid attention, because we've got other, so many different balls we're trying to juggle. But still, it's an adopted plan that, are we utilizing it? Are we incorporating it? Are we, is it?
So, yes, we're taking a look at all the documents that have been adopted, but we're also proposing to update some of those based on requirements and also just reexamining some of the potential in each of these different areas. So I would say yes, but hopefully making it current to what we're looking forward to in the future.
Good. No, absolutely, we need to update it. We need to get it off the shelf and do something with it. So I'm glad, good, I'm glad that we're moving forward with that. Thank you.
I think that was the only subarea plan that we worked on.
Town Center.
Yeah, Town Center and Melody Hill. Okay, anyone else before we say goodnight to the, all right.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're, can we take a three-minute break? We now have a review, excuse me, review of the ordinance amending property annexation and zoning map code with our associate city planner, Sarah Pizzo.
Hello, good evening, everybody. So I'll be going over the 4713-240th Street Southwest annexation, which I should be pretty familiar to you all. So the purpose of tonight's review session is to go over the annexation ordinance and zoning ordinance that will be before you next week for adoption, to go over the planning commission recommendation, the results of the boundary review board, and of course, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. On the right here is a vicinity map of the property that is proposed to be annexed into the city of Mount Lake Terrace, highlighted in yellow and outlined in red. All right, so the agenda for tonight: refresh you all on some background information, the annexation process, again, planning commission recommendation, boundary review board, some analysis, staff recommendation, and next steps. All right, so to remind you all, this property is located off of 240th Street Southwest. It's east of 48th Avenue West. It is in unincorporated Snohomish County Island, and it's .43 acres. And the reason the property owners would like to annex into the city is to receive city sewer services. We were before you February 8th of this year, where an agreement was signed to provide city sewer services on the condition that the annexation is completed within six months. So we are within that six-month timeframe, and we'll meet that condition if adopted on May 2nd. So here's the annexation process. It's started over a year ago and has involved coordination with the county, the property owners, planning commission, and city council. And so we are in the final step for city council, including tonight's work session, next week's public hearing, where the ordinances for annexation and designating the zoning will be up for adoption. I do want to note that there were a couple errors, or same error on each resolution that you had previously approved as part of the annexation process. The acreage was just off by a little bit. So the correct annexation area is .43 acres, and so those updated documents are in your packets for signature next week and are, of course, in the draft ordinances. Planning Commission's recommendation, so Planning Commission recommended a zoning designation of RS 8400. That's single household residential zoning with a minimum lot size of 8,400 square feet. And this slide is showing the zoning map with a circle around the property in question with a larger call-out showing that property with the zoning designation of RS 8400. And the reason the little black dotted line is around it is because it's not yet incorporated into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. All right, since I've been before you all, we have heard back from the boundary review board. They held their meeting March 20th of this year, and they decided to waive review of the annexation, which is something they have the option to do via state law for properties that are under less than 10 acres and under $2 million in assessed value. So the annexation area proposed met those criteria, and the board decided to waive their review. All right, and then just going over some analysis related to the annexation and the zoning for this proposed annexation area. So the comprehensive plan says that in order to provide city services, land has to be incorporated into the city of Mount Lake Terrace, or there needs to be an annexation agreement. This property is within the city's municipal urban growth boundary, or growth area, and is designated in our comprehensive plan as an area of potential annexation. The Planning Commission, as I mentioned, recommends zoning designation of RS 8400, and our municipal code does require a separate ordinance for annexation and for zoning designation. And then it was a condition of the agreement that this property be annexed within six months of that agreement being signed. So staff does recommend approval of the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance for this property following the May 2nd public hearing. And next steps is discussion of the ordinances, and then you'll have the opportunity to vote on them next week. Discussion and questions.
Does anyone have, because I have one question.
Sure.
Is everything surrounding that 8400?
Yes, let me go back to that map. Yeah, so all of the darkest yellow is RS 8400, and the bright yellow is RS 7200, and then the faintest yellow is RS 4800. So you can see it's surrounded by RS 8400, and the lot does meet that minimum lot size requirement. So that was part of Planning Commission's consideration for how to zone that lot.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question. I figured that it was 8400 all the way around, because we have 8400 in bits and pieces all around the city. But it's very, very difficult to, especially at a piece of property this size, to get the density that you need, whether it's 8400, unless you make it into a PUD, which is too small for that, so. Anyways, but I'm not going to stop this one. Yes, uh-huh. Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? And it's just going to be on the consent calendar?
No, it's a public.
Oh, that's right. Actually, I'm on the wrong thing on this thing here. That's, okay. Then I guess we're done? No, we're not done.
Yeah, that was up for my presentation. Unless you have any questions before next week.
Any more questions?
No. Okay. Great, sounds good. Thank you.
I better get on the right one here. Okay, so next is, and we've been having people waiting so patiently tonight, review of the supplement number eight for OTAC Sound Transit Consulting Services with our Public Works Director, Jesse Hoffman. And he's going to do the next two.
It was fascinating, really. It impacts me heavily, all that stuff, so it was good to hear. Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Council for hearing me tonight. What I have in front of you is the OTAC Professional Services Contract Supplement Number Eight. The services provided under this agreement are reimbursed by Sound Transit. This contract provides a consultant primarily, it's really, we could hire more than one, but that's all that's needed, for construction and project coordination for the city for the Sound Transit Lynnwood Link Project. So basically, this is somebody who comes and helps us with getting the permitting done, getting all the plans submitted into Blue Beam, doing all that stuff. This increases the spending authorization by $400,000, bringing the total contract amount to $2,921,469. Contracts over the amount of $75,000 must be approved by the city council. This contract may be approved by planning by placing this on the May 2nd, 2024 consent agenda and authorizing the city manager to sign it. Do you have any questions? I think this is supplement eight, so I think you may have seen seven more before this. So.
And yes, we'd like to take their money.
Yeah. Okay, any questions I can answer for you on this one?
Are there any questions on this? Well, we've been approving this one for, in bits and pieces, for how long now?
I'm pretty sure in Washington State, no. May I present the next item, Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Okay. The day wireless system radio procurement and installation contract. So this has been a long time coming. A long time ago, I think it was at the beginning of last year, Council approved $200,000 for the replacement of our existing radio system, which is no longer functional. We had a lot of back and forth with the, with day wireless about pricing and the contracting and all this stuff. Finally, we've come up with this. Our current radio system is no longer functional and no longer supported by the manufacturer. The city council, I just said that, the contract is for $199,607.38. There are two systems involved in this contract. One is the Apex system, which is what the first responders use, so we're getting a small amount of that system that will basically allow us to communicate in public works with Snow 911 in the event of an emergency. Snow 911 at this time is not ready to take us as a system in public works onto their system, and so the second system actually gives us more value for our dollar and can be interlinked when and if Snow 911 allows us onto their system. when and if Snow 911 allows us onto their system. So it's a moto-turbo system, still produced by Motorola, and there's a link piece that we can buy down the road if we want to link into the Snow 911 system. So this is buying us one desktop and one handheld of the Apex system, that's the one our police and the fire department uses, and for the moto-turbo system, 24 handhelds, 18 mobiles, and two base stations. The contract does include installation. Contracts over $75,000 must be brought to the city council for approval. This contract may be approved by city council by placing it on the May 2nd 2024 consent agenda and authorizing the city manager to sign it. Can I answer any questions about this?
Anyone? Questions, comments? It's getting late, so. And it's a no-brainer.
Okay. Good.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Okay, so now we're on to public comment. Are we going to read the one that we got?
You don't need to read it. I just mentioned that it was submitted and given to you guys, and it will be included in the packet for the record. Nobody else is here, and no one signed up ahead of time for online comment.
Okay, great. So next is the review of the next meeting agenda. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Remind me, what was the modification for DEI? That was probably a couple meetings ago that?
No.
No, okay.
It's a relatively new request from the commission to dedicate one of their seats as a youth seat. And since we're recruiting right now, they thought it was timely to bring it forward. And the ordinance doesn't specifically state the age, but they really wanted to make sure that was clear in the ordinance, that they wanted to reserve a seat for youth in high school in particular.
Do we, do we have an age limit on any of our boards and commissions?
No, we have three boards and commissions. We were just talking about this today, actually. Three boards and commissions that have a seat for a youth representative. Arts and the Conference Plan Advisory Group has a youth seat, but none of those specify an age range, I don't believe.
I didn't think we had an age range, so when I was talking to the, to the school district kids yesterday, can't remember, for, because this was the leadership team of all the high schools. And so I just says, boy, I don't think there's a age limit, not limit, but, you know, age restriction, so if you want to be on a board or commission, put your name in there.
Yeah, we want to hear, want to hear from them.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say, you know, I'm a big fan of this topic, so as long as we're talking about it. You know, I think one of the things, so while we don't require a specific age, I, I think one of the barriers to youth participation is that our terms tend to be three to four years in length, which for most high schoolers is a very long time and not one that they're often able to commit to. And so I do think there is still opportunity for us to revisit that, given that there is, I think, a lot of interest, and we've had a lot of conversation recently about revisiting how youth can engage more intentionally. And I think we've had some really good examples of that working really, really well. I think there's some opportunity to revisit specific language around our commissions, and maybe that's not part of the process this year, maybe, but I think before we get to the process next year, it would be really nice to revisit and see if we could structure at least one seat in a way that maybe better supports youth, and that actually might better support people who, you know, maybe are renting in our community and actually, you know, the idea of committing to three or four years feels like a long time if you, you don't know necessarily that you're going to be in the community that long. So anyway, I think there's some good, good conversation to have there and would love to revisit the conversation.
Well, we could have one, one-year board member, and that could be the youth, youth one. But anyways, it's something for us to look into, because we used to have a lot of youth participation in the past, and then it ended. So I know they just grow up and then they, they graduate from high school and then they're gone, so. All right, so we can then move on to?
Oh, sorry. Are we doing the agenda?
Council comments is next. Do we, did you, did we skip something?
No, I don't think. Did we? Hold the comment, no, yeah, next meeting agenda.
Yeah, we, then, yeah, so we did the meeting agenda.
Okay, can I comment?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. I got so excited about youth participation. I forgot I had a question. So my question, Jeff, was just about the business license code. That was an area where we had some discussion about there being a little bit of additional work done after we discussed it last. We'll have time to take a look at that before the, because it's on the consent calendar right now, which I'm fine with, and I guess I just want to make sure that I have time to review it thoroughly before the meeting.
So the memo that I've already put together for that item lists the changes that council requested and where they were made, so you'll be able to see those pretty easily.
Okay, so now we can move on to the council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Something we could talk about later in our community would be that the Mount Lake Terrace High School jazz band.
Just got an award.
Yeah, was at the Lionel Hampton Jazz Festival in Idaho. They received the top swinging honor jazz band there, and it's in my favorite part of Idaho, Moscow, because you could go there under 21 to drink when you're in high school. So it's, it's a very, very famous place in Idaho.
I know, it is.
Yeah, and lots of people went there and had lots of places to hear live music. So it was very famous. But anyway, in light of that, we could think about when they come home, maybe giving them some kind of a honorary in life of some sort, I don't know.
I don't know if we've ever given that, the jazz band, anything. And they've been winning awards for, what, 20-some years.
And they also had, one of their editors won an award, too.
And, and the school newspaper keeps getting awards, too.
And, and we've asked to see if Vince Demaro could also get a proclamation from our city for his years of service, and he, he's the coordinator of the Hawkeye.
Right, and Darren Fall is still the music teacher for the.
So in, in lieu of that, I wanted to give you a little historical perspective of Moscow, Idaho also, so thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I was going to say, that story is about Vancouver.
Okay, your turn.
I have something. I have something to add for council comments. So Hasko just purchased some property over in Edmonds, and I just hope that they can get that thing built without a lot of the, the opposition coming, coming out, because I, I would really love for them to do something, because they're the only people who are going to be building 0 to 30% housing for, for our community. And so if and when they come into this city, I just want to just say, let's welcome them with open arms. And, and the, the, the population of, of the people that they serve are just regular people. So I just want to just say that I, I just really am excited about the Edmonds piece. And then they just finished Marysville, and they're going to be, there's a lot of things that they're doing, but, but again, you know, who else are, are going to build that 0 to 30%? Yep. So I just wanted to bring that up. Anyone else for council comments? No, I guess we want to go home and, and have me adjourn this meeting.
Who's giving me a wake-up call on Saturday morning?
We're adjourned.